We have three members of the Finance Committee meeting, Mr. Hendricks, Ms. Tota, and myself. And we also have Mr. McGuire, Dr. McGuire, and we have Mr. O'Connell and Alton Crowery. So we have Mr. Grecia. So we have a couple of issues on the agenda, the budget, the Account Forty-Six, and also the CACR program.
Where am I going?
It is so. Can you?
How are you?
Closer to it. Just came back from vacation and still don't have my full voice back yet. More relaxed.
No excuses.
Mr. Harson, anything interesting in this project?
We're talking the April financial report first.
Correct.
Very good. On the first two pages of the April financial report, you will see at the bottom of page two, total revenues are at forty-eight percent of anticipated so far for the year. We were at forty-nine percent a year ago. And right now, we're starting to see, as of the April statement, the increased rate in resident EIT showing up now in those revenues, which we had been expecting to come in right about now, but we would see withholdens for the lower rate up to this point. So those things are moving along at a pace that I would expect them to be. Same thing applies on page three with the expenditures. The, as I had mentioned last time, that we had the extra pay period in March that kicked out in April, so you can now see that you have more of an apples-to-apples comparison on wages. And then when you factor in the pay increases plus the pension costs and the insurance costs, that pretty much makes up the difference of the cost from where we were a year ago. And we are holding right now at about thirty-one percent of budget actually expended. That's pretty much, there's nothing that's all that significant on the general fund other than we're continuing to do the things, seeing the trends that we have so far. Same thing, I think I could say, is applying to the solid waste fund, because we are getting in majority of our solid waste fees for the year. And you can see what I would lay out, the expenditures on that. Everything on that is lining up very similarly to where we were same time a year ago. And actually, the revenues are coming in a little bit faster than a year ago. But those numbers are going to end up being something pretty close to your end by the time of... The risk fund, thirty-four percent received, thirty percent spent through four months of the year, right on pace. That was page five. Page six, the golf course finally got some visitors in the month of April. Again, there were some expenses that came in a little bit earlier in the cycle this year, and I think we're still running a bigger deficit than I expect we're going to see a month or two from now with the golf fund. So keep track of that one. I'm going to keep on that one through the May and the June reports. And if there's something in there that looks a little bit odd, I will follow up with you. But at this point, I would just say it's still a timing issue. And as you can see, we had a lot of people on the course in April. Nine One One Fund, nothing out of the ordinary on that one either at this point. It's been pretty well lining up with how we would spend a year ago. Trexler Fund, we are due to get another reimbursement from the fund for expenses that have occurred, this is on page eight. But when Ms. Bowman is in the middle of the CACR process, I put several other things aside it, so we can get that thing done correctly. So we will have reimbursements on that coming back in the very near future. Other than that, I mean, the overall pattern of revenues and expenditures in the funds is pretty well stable. And you can now see with permanent wages, premium pay, shift differential, nothing that would seem tremendously out of the ordinary for where we are at this point of the year. I actually do want to raise one issue, because I know I think it's going to come up. And we should go back to page seven for a minute. You will notice here that we have had an increase in premium pay in the Nine One One Fund. And I know that there have been some questions about dispatchers. And I know that of the actually funded vacancies, we have four currently. And we are spending more in 'oh-four at this point than we would have, or 'oh-six, I mean, than we would feel comfortable with. But if you add to it the permanent wages, we're actually spending about the same wage as we did this time a year ago. So it's just, a lot of it is now more concentrated in overtime. And not sure exactly, given between now and supposedly summer 2019, when we transfer that over to the regions, there are some things there that I think we probably need to consider on keeping those positions still. Because I'm sure that a lot of folks are thinking that two years from now, there's not going to be anything there. And that's going to have a big impact on trying to maintain the staff, among other things. Vacancy report follows with everything else that you would normally see. And among the financial, that is all I have, Mr. Harson.
Just to point out that in the finance report, the way it was printed out, I never got the details of it. I thought it was just my copy, but it sounds like yours.
I'm sorry, which one are you, the whole thing?
Yes, the whole thing. With the exception of the vacancy report.
Well, I have a full printout. A few extra copies, I suppose. But which one in particular are you looking at?
I was just looking at every page. I tried to follow through with you and I don't what...
I've got a couple of copies.
I don't remember mine the last four months, five months.
Let me see what you got. I have an extra copy, yours is here, maybe you can share those. I'm not sure what happened.
Yeah, I was trying to keep up, adding it up. But I was looking at the vacancy report.
What do yours look like?
This is the whole, the whole file.
Ah. A different test. Take this and take this.
So that would have been better. Okay, I wanted just better ideas. I was trying to add it up, but it just was going too fast.
Sorry, those are the only extra copies I had on me at the moment.
Can I see the first page?
The total in the governmental revenue seems to be a little low.
Let's see what we're talking about.
I'm just looking at page two.
At this point, I think that's, that's going to be mostly a seasonal thing. I know that in May, for example, the next quarter of casino fee will show up because it came in that month. And there will be some other reimbursements that are forthcoming in May. That one, if you start seeing that number reel down after another couple of months, I think we've got an issue. But at this point, I think it's just time.
Yeah, that's a casino fee. Well, the casino fees, we usually get it quarterly, right?
Yeah, let's talk that over for a minute also. Obviously, May twenty-sixth is coming on. I have no idea what the current status is of what the Supremes in Harrisburg are going to have done with that legislation, has seen something about trying to maintain a status quo for the short term. I just don't know that anything complete has happened yet. My expectation would be that we have received what we would expect for fourth quarter of 2016 and first quarter of 2017 already. I would expect in early August that we're going to get most of the second quarter 2017 payment, at the very least, because the first two months of that quarter are still within the current legal setup. After that point, hopefully, something gets resolved up there. And it comes to a place that we can be sure that the rest of that revenue is going to be coming in. I'm waiting with the same level of anticipation as you on that one.
Yeah, let's see. We saw our hands right now.
Unfortunately. But I think you will still see, I think, a fairly sizable payment come in at the beginning of August for second quarter, no matter what happens.
And I think the MGM deal fell through.
It fell through, as I understand it, yes.
Well, that's probably good for us. Any other questions? Anybody else, if you guys do these reports? They don't have any questions. Oh, you have a question?
Just an observation, Tom, about the dog license. I have noticed that it hasn't been very popular. I mean, it seems here that, what, nine?
I'm sorry, Ms. Tota, what were you looking at?
The revenue for the dog license?
Oh, the dog harness.
Is it that the community do not know where to go? Or is it because it's new? I mean, because we do have animals in the city.
It's a little bit of both. But what the city does, in its animal control office, to issue the licenses is not actually collect the license revenue. We collect it on behalf of Lehigh County. And the city gets a small stipend for every license it sells, very small ones. So the revenue we're getting is actually serving as a collection fee. But the bulk of that money is actually being collected by the county.
I understand. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Harson, at one point, you used a phrase, which, as I was trying to get through
the pages here, not being a member of the Finance Committee, you used the phrase, "coming in faster than anticipated." Does that mean, since there's more of this instant than anticipated, the fact that it's coming in faster means more than anticipated?
Indeed, yes, Mr. McGuire. It means both that and in the case of the solid waste fee, it probably means that we're getting it earlier as a whole. I'm expecting, particularly with resident EIT, that we're going to see a significant increase overall during the year. I don't think it's going to happen at the, at your end in the solid waste fund. It's going to come in more about where we expected to, pretty close to last year's totals. It's just that we're getting a larger amount of that collection coming in in the first four months of the year than we did a year ago.
Okay. And then the other one that you brought up about the contribution from the casinos, this may as much to my colleagues as to yourself. Actually, it's a conversational thing, which is, we mentioned that the MGM casino bid has fallen apart. Yes, that gives us somewhat more certainty for this year. And there are several other things going on in Harrisburg to deal with gambling, specifically online gambling, gambling, airline gambling, football, futures, finance, all that things. Those things have a, if we keep eroding the casinos, which are our set of golden geese, we can end up in very bad situations. And I'm wondering, are we, the city, representing to our state legislators, of which we have three, perhaps others that we know, but certainly there's three, that we have a position on such things as online gambling, et cetera? My concern is, and people more knowledgeable than I have that voiced it in the newspaper, which is, you keep doing that, you're going to lessen the turnover at the casinos, and we, the municipalities, are getting a better deal from the casinos than we're likely to get from online gambling, et cetera, et cetera. Does anyone know what action the city is taking on these pieces of legislation?
I don't know if we can take any action.
Of course, we can take action. Julio, we are a municipality. We stand to be hurt by this. We had an election recently, we can collect the...
We can think of action as a resolution, perhaps. But I don't think we have the power to say no.
To say no to what? Microphone.
To say no to having a license for, to do gambling.
All right. Now, listen, I am not saying that we should do something to forbid it. I'm saying we need to get our municipal pressure onto our legislators, because we think we will be hurt by this.
Well, that's what I'm saying. We can do resolutions. That would be a viable thing. We don't have it in the past. But that's not what you can do. And we can probably, for Harrisburg, we can, you know, it's not, it affects us lawfully. You're right. You're absolutely correct about that. But we don't follow that.
No, I didn't mean to imply that. Is the Finance Committee going to have a discussion of this, so we can put something together?
We can. We can.
Okay, action.
You just, you work on that microphone.
Okay, yeah, we'll do that.
It's good, yeah. It's in the law, where you can act on it, et cetera, resolutions. Any other comments, questions? Go ahead, Mr. Harson.
Thank you, Mr. Green. I just go to the vacancy report. It's just, it keeps growing. Street four, police fifteen, EMS four, fire three, park six, CDC ten, planning and zoning four, building standards and safety nine, communications nine. I understand, nine eleven, communication. It's going to go away. Seventy-four position. How the hell do you function? I don't get it. It's like playing a game with three baseball players against the other team in nine. I don't, I don't get it. What's going on?
I can speak for the other departments. I will say that as of next week, the Finance Department will be fully staffed.
That's great.
That's all I, that's all I can speak to. On the other issues, I have no doubt that where there are key vacancies, that the departments are trying to do as much as they can to fill them quickly. I don't know that necessarily the trend of the vacancies is all that different from what I've seen in the last two years. But in terms of how long it's taking to refill them, that could be a different issue.
Okay.
Well, you just support, and support what you're saying, Mr. O'Connell. You know, we passed in the budgets and positions, and they haven't been filled up yet. And those are issues that we can continue to request the administration to take a matter on.
But the status part is, I mean, how long should we wait, you know, until something horrible happens?
Well, we, we're five months into the year, so, you know, why not fill it up?
Julio, we have no power.
The only power we have is by speaking. Especially in EMS, when they just got, it sounds like, they showed last week, I heard, yeah, in commendations and monies, so it's, I'm, I'm, Mr. Hendricks, and we appointed, I mean, we funded two positions that they have been asking for, for over three years. And they didn't fill them up last year. This year, we're in the fifth month, and we're still waiting, you know?
I mean, you, you're right. But I mean, okay, I'll give you, I'll give you the rest. But CDC ten, planning and zoning four, building standards and safety nine. I mean, how can we do any community economic development in the city of Alltown, other than the nays, when you don't, when you have twenty-three, twenty-three spots open? It's, it's just, it's puzzling. It's puzzling. But it'd be the same thing every month, so.
But we got to keep asking. So you guess on the record? Yes? So anyway, I'm sorry, let's move on. Unless somebody has any comments on the financial report for April. If not, let's move on to Account Forty-Six.
Can we, can we address...
Well, how about we finish this, and then you can...
It's better to get on the subject you're on, being on the pack, and only be able to talk once you get three minutes.
We have another meeting, that's the problem, coming up.
I don't want to address you on the pack.
No, but I didn't, I didn't say that you can come on.
I would like to address, but you just said prior to the meeting. Okay, I'm asking for three people on council to allow me to address your issue that you don't have the authority or, you know, the idea. Simple thing, pass an ordinance that if you don't fill the job, you lose the money out of the budget, they can't spend it, and it's over. There's your answer.
Thank you, Mr. Harson. Now you wasted three minutes. Two will do three minutes, really. All right, let's move on to Account Forty-Six, please.
The Account Forty-Six report is actually as of this morning. I had, I had Ms. Megan Hertz run that this morning to show you where we are at. And on, in the aggregate through five months of the year, our overall forty-six spend is well below five-twolths as a whole. And I am, just go ahead and look over all of that if you wish. But the, our overall spend in that area is very well under control to this point of the year.
The other, the other thing is, probably the Account Forty-Six, but it's also, it's not only the Account Forty-Six, but it's in the police, in fire, premium pay. We got to keep any time of that to make sure that it doesn't get too much out of hand.
Well, that would go back to the monthly report, and I'm looking, I, I did, I don't know that there's anything that's really vastly different from where we were at a year ago on the aggregate with that. But we do, we always do keep a watch on that. In fact, twenty-nine percent of spend through April on premium, twenty-nine percent of budget, it was twenty-seven percent of budget a year ago. And it actually was, and actually fewer dollars so far this year than we were at some time a year ago on premium pay.
Any comments on Account Forty-Six, from anybody? And I know that the, they probably will have a chance to discuss, to talk about it in a second. All right. All right, let's talk about the CACR fund.
Having seen the printouts that you have up there, I have a feeling that you got to cut off on this one as well.
Yes.
I got one I can share in this case, so you can continue to look on one of the others. Generally speaking here, this is, this is end of March still on cap, all right? This is actually end of March, you know, with the report, this one, one five nineteen, of where we are in the CACR funds. I have an expectation that the project we started on last spring, dealing with getting reconciling all of the closed capital accounts, is getting very near to being complete. And I'm looking forward to being able to tell you such, and tell you what we came up with out of it, because I think it'll answer some questions that people have had for a long time on, on a few capital issues. But we're, we're racing to get that done alongside the CACR, because we know we will be starting eighteen budget proceedings very soon. So we want to make sure that we get that done and have a report for you.
Any comments from the, from the dice? The expenditure? Any comments from the floor, anything that we discussed about for the public?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I hate to hear what Mr. O'Connell said about council having real power. As a governing body, the city do have power, Mr. Chairman. And I shared on city council, Julio, though, we had power. We used our power. You guys have used your power. You can subpoena the man, you can call for investigation, you can do all these things. You haven't done any of these things. Put the guy on the spot. Julio, you know where we did that. We called for investigation, we subpoenaed it. We got answers. I mean, here we get no answers. Since you're a governing body of the city, start governing, the mayor. Did I hear Ms. Harson say there's twenty-seven pages here? Did you say anything about twenty-seven pages this year?
Twenty-seven pages.
I need to go back and look at that, because we are going to have one of those periods coming up here one of these years. But it's, it's going to be, you know, like, once...
Okay, I was concerned by that, so you don't know.
I'm not too worried, because it only happens about once every ten years. So I'm not...
I know you're paying Mr. Greedy more than he's sixty-one.
Oh. We have so many, so many people that are not in their positions that we have...
I'm only looking at, I'm only looking at... But my first question is, this cash reserve, this twenty-two thousand, twenty-two million dollars, that does not actually, because you haven't transferred the three point six to twenty-seventeen budget.
Are you looking at in the, what did you say?
Yeah, page ten and fourteen. On the chart, there's a general fund, twenty-two million. Mr. Harson used to call that his cash reserve fund. But there's a lot of money, you see, that's what matters, correct? Isn't that thirty point six million dollars coming out of there, the twenty-seventeen budget? Million dollars for the risk management fund and the other quarters that were passed on the unappropriate balance, and you're going to take it out of reserve?
I'm just waiting to hear, have them summon me to talk. All right, thank you. We've said before that three point six million, we already had factored in at the end of the year, is what we're going to have in the cash balance at your end. And we are, I am fully aware that by the time we get to December, that three point six million will be, I mean, that's, that's the deficit we have against our planned expenditures at this point. We also have the first of the seven payments to make back to the solid waste fund for the year. We're always vigilant about those things. And what we're seeing now, in terms of the cash in the accounts, is in line with what we expected, given that those things are coming up later on in the year.
Your question, if you didn't transfer the money out of it. Question, if you didn't transfer the money out of it. The million dollar risk management money and the other one.
Some of those transfers are going to show up in the May statements because of the timing on when we did some of those. We had, we have not, he raises the issue about the risk management issue, I would expect. I would see something on that with the May report, because we just got that all finished up. And we had the, we still have to move the money over yet, obviously, for the first year of the solid waste fund. But we keep vigil, we're vigilant about that, making sure that those will get moved over at the appropriate times.
Mr. Harson, I have two more minutes. I might next, if you keep saying about it, you can have enough, I mean, if you look at this report, we were eight million dollars short when you take the expenditure versus the income. I don't know how we're going to make up a three point six million dollars if I transfer money out of cash reserves. We were eight million dollars short already on this, on this tax report. So something, I don't know. I hope there's enough, there's enough banking to write some checks or do something, or I don't understand how Mr. Harson can say what he's saying. And since you're going to do it with two minutes early, and Mr. Harson also has on his capital project report, he's going to transfer, he's going to close projects and transfer the balance. Mr. Greedy, you're four point seven million dollars in the deficit already in the, in the capital fund, and it's council duty to transfer, cause I'm the council, not Mr. Harson. It's the way that the rate, the way it's city law. And how can you transfer these monies out of a capital fund with a deficit of four point seven, I mean, something to the sound of it. And how's council going to do it? Because Mr. Harson cannot do it. He hasn't, he doesn't have the authority to transfer money. You guys have the authority. You didn't tell me you're going to do it, Mr. Greedy?
Well, where we're going to get the money from, to transfer?
Well, that's what I'm saying. Forty-four point seven and oh already on page ten.
We get the...
And then on Mr. Harson's capital, I think he has one, two, three...
It's still early in the year.
Early, I mean.
He was, he was a presentation, Mr. Harson, please.
The negative balance, that there is the ongoing issue that we are waiting, we oftentimes see projects wrapped up and then wait reimbursement, particularly on state transportation projects, that will be coming in at the very end. That's something I think we need to probably explain in a little more detail at a subsequent meeting, because this question has come up, it's a legitimate one. But that track record right there is, we're aware that there are reimbursements it had coming from various projects. With respect to the projects that are being closed out, we, part of the exercise was to determine in there whether any of the monies that we're showing as being appropriated are actually available to us in cash, which is why we're going through the reconciliation process as thoroughly as possible. I, I'm not absolutely certain that all of those balances that are showing up in there right now are actual balances, and we're going to get that figured out so we don't spend what we don't have.
Yeah, that will be very important. But I think the other, the other part that you pointed out is in regards to the reimbursement of the projects, and when those reimbursement would be coming, and how far, how far along are those projects?
Absolutely. So I will, I'll see what I can do to get an overall view of that at the next monthly financial meeting. And so we can try to go into that in a little more detail. I'm fine with doing that.
Wait, since I got one minute, 50.
You got about 30 seconds.
51.
30 seconds.
Okay, since you guys are pointing an outside firm out of manager of money, I think our council got to get down to the brass hat, to get some oversight on management. Mr. Greedy, you got to manage your money correctly and put, put back in place Investment Dividend Committee that City Council passed years ago. I think you even ordered, I think I looked on it, and you ordered, yes, to provide oversight years ago with this. And on that committee, it's supposed to be two people with background in investments. So you point that committee, you provide the oversight on this. But provide the oversight, so you should get back to appointing that, the Dividend Committee, investment, dividend committee. I mean, what's the sense of having a board?
We have a committee that is listed as being required, as Mr. Hirschman points out in the appointments. Whichever committee, I think, was focused on this subject has not met for several years, and I have heard something about that when we were pooling some money with Lehigh County about a decade ago, that it was deemed at that point that we were, that perhaps our own individual investment policy was irrelevant. It's certainly not irrelevant. It's not irrelevant now. And I have indicated to council that I would be very supportive of restarting the, the investment committee again, because good advice, it definitely is.
It is, it is good, because especially with the, you know, I'm expecting something's going to happen soon. Something happened probably weeks ago in regards to the market itself, and we don't know if the market is actually overpriced or not. I think it is.
Well, with respect, if I may, Mr. Greedy, to what Mr. Hirschman is speaking about and our retaining the Manning and DePere, what we're doing with that pooled cash is not going to be long-term investments. It's going to be very short-term investments, very safe, highly rated bonds, highly rated T-bills. The idea being that right now with that rather sizable pooled cash is that we're getting virtually zero return. And we've looked into it with some detail and working with them, and we are feeling confident that we can bring in at least a percent better on the balance than we're getting right now. So none of those things are going to be affected by the stock market. We're going to have things that are money market and very high-grade, short-term bonds, bills, and that sort of thing. So we were, we're not going to take our city's cash and put it into things that are risky.
Yeah, but you know, everything is driven one way, you know? Something goes up, something goes down. About the way you always.
You know that.
Is the mic on?
Thank you.
Is the mic on? Is that it?
I think the mic's on the, it's loud enough.
We need a technician here to, page, I'm down to page 10 or 14. What we're showing on this non-pool bank accounts. And in here, we show one, two, three, four basic bond issues. Am I right to assume that that's the money that's left in all those bonds, and those are the only bonds that we have money left there to spend? Is that correct, my assumption? It comes up to about $10 million.
You missed the first one, Harson, please.
I think that's reasonable to assume that, because this, we do leave the cash that is drawn in from the various bond issues that we have done and have been gradually spending down over the last few years. I think that's a safe assumption to make.
Now, now we took a bond about this year, was it 2.5 million? We had an under bond for this year in '17? The January of '17? Is there a reason why that isn't in here? Or did we spend that money already on that bond?
The $2.5 million issue is actually assigned to Lehigh County Authority. We provided the conduit for it, because this was part of the administrative order with EPA. It is a debt for them. We obviously are keeping the accounts in place and making sure that we have reserves. And that's when you look at like item number 080, non-pool bank accounts, we are storing up the cash so we can actually pay off the debt service in a timely fashion on that. But that particular issue is actually an LCA debt.
Yeah, but it doesn't show up, it should, an LCA debt? You mean a ratepayer debt? Or a taxpayer debt? We took it out, the city took it out, right?
We took it out.
We took it out, so I mean, that should be a taxpayer debt. Maybe it's turned, when the money was turned over for something for LCA.
Everything's a taxpayer debt.
Oh, there's ratepayers and taxpayers. So we've got to keep on the white trash. So I'm hoping for where that shows up. I mean, doesn't it show paper in this piece of paper? Mr. Greedy?
The cash that we are accumulating for purposes of paying the debt service on the LCA administrative order is accumulating right now. You see it in line 080. That is the revenue the city is hanging on to. And at the time that debt service is owed on the administrative order issued, the $2.5 million, we will draw down on that account. We have plenty enough in there to meet whatever the debt service is. But that's the revenue that's coming down on it. And that's what it is.
Where is the $2.5 million? I mean, it's not in this line here, because that's only $703,000. So I mean, there's $2.5, $2 million or something. I mean, he says you're going to draw down on it, but where is it?
I believe the LCA would have the $2.5 million, since they needed that to actually do the AO projects. You're not going to find that in here, because that's what LCA got out of bond proceeds. You'd have to go over there and look for it.
So I guess what I'm getting at here is that somewhere in January or February, there should have been somewhere where we, we took that debt on, the $2.5 million, that bond, there should have been an input output here then, if it went over to the LCA. I mean, how do we, how does somebody track this? Do you, I mean, do you know where it went? Maybe you don't. I don't, I don't know where it went.
How did it go? Tell us, please.
We are always aware when we are calculating our debt service issue. We throw in absolutely everything that we owe in there, and we have a schedule in place to make sure that all of this is paid off. With respect to the AO debt, which because of the agreement, the concession lease agreement, that we provide the conduit for the financing to happen, but LCA gets the money to do something with it. Even though the business at this moment is very careful to lay out for accounting purposes, and you will see that in the cap for when it is done in another month, exactly where those particular debts are and what our responsibilities are to them, we don't, we don't hide them anyplace.
Mr. Greedy, are you satisfied? I mean?
No, no, I got you, hold on. The thing where he's looking, I mean, what he's saying is, in the debt service, where would this money be? Where can you find it through the actual report? The bond fund money?
The bond fund money for that particular issue? Let's go back to the ones that are above it. No, sir. Let me answer the question. Got it? The items that you see under the PLIGIT, those are bond issues that came to the city for general construction purposes. We have the proceeds of those bonds within the city, because that's what we are drawing down for the purpose of taking care of those construction projects. We don't have the $2.5 million that out of this debt issue was provided to the Lehigh County Authority for the purposes of doing the administrative order projects. But in line 080 down there in the non-pool bank account, we keep the reserve of the cash that is being stored up, so that when we have to make repayments on those issues, that's where it will come out of. We are drawing down from ratepayers and for signatories, that particular money with the, that will eventually get paid out. But the issue of the debt, of the $2.5 million in proceeds will never show up here, because it's with LCA.
So you got, you look, you look at, I can page 10, second from the bottom up. So here's, you know? I believe it's coming out.
So Mr. Greedy, if I go to LCA, they're going to show a $2.5 million input from the city of Valentine, is that what we were saying?
Sure.
And what month that is? And our records don't show, our records don't show that it came in and went out.
Probably January or February, right?
My point is that it should show up somewhere on one of these reports that it came. I'm not worried about where you spend it right now. I, I don't see the trail of where it came in and then where it went out. And, and so I guess what he's saying here, the $703,000 is all that's left of the $2.5 million. Correct? Correct?
No.
No, nobody's, no. You'll find the $2.5 million proceeds in the LCA budget, because that's where the revenues came in. What you see here, because we're the conduit for the debt service, is we're accumulating a debt service reserve based upon ratepayers and signatories that comes into the city. We start seeing the debt being paid down, the debt service on that $2.5 million issue sometime in the very near future. The city hangs on to the ESPRO amount as a means of making sure that that debt is paid, that the actual $2.5 million is sitting over in LCA. We're reserving this to pay down the debt in a timely fashion when the time comes.
Okay, move on. I'm going over to the capital fund. Two questions, basically. Page, page one in the capital fund, you have a project here, 1225, that says traffic signals upgrade various, and it's, it's basically under the first page with expenditures, incumbences. And then if I go down to page, let's see here. That same project comes up again.
Are you looking on page six?
I was looking on page, page one and then page. Page one and then page.
1912.
And then page eight, Mr. Harson. It comes up again, and that one's the 2012 debt funding. And then the first one, it also says that that's also under an O1 funding source, which says it's a gold bond, some of it, whatever. And there's different numbers on each of these lines. I guess I'm trying to understand why there's two, the same numbers on two separate.
Then let's go ahead and have that conversation over at now.
Funding sources.
You will notice that the beginning balance in 1225 is showing a $242,000.
Correct.
All right. You will notice that we are doing project 1225 out of a multiple bond proceeds. The 2015 debt funding contains a portion of it. The 2012 debt funding contains a portion of it. We draw down based upon what are in there, and if you put those balances together, you'll get the total of what's in that project.
Okay, understand. Would there be a better way of displaying this or not, I guess?
You've got, if you've got it, where you want a better way?
Well, because it's convoluted and we have to go through this, and then you have to break it up, because if you look at the first page one, it says funding is O1 and O2. O2 says grant funds, which is probably, and then you have to go back and see really what the true cost of this project is. The true cost is maybe over four or five pages. I can see it's over two for sure here. Okay, moving on. Back in where he's closing out these 39 projects, I counted up. Now, we don't have any numbers, which he talked about a little earlier, these projects that are going to be closed out, the 39 projects. Now, the charter says that you should make a report on this, and I'm not saying for a detailed audit. I think there should be maybe a paragraph in each one of these projects, basically showing what the starting amount of money was and what the ending, if there were all the expenses and then what you ended up with as far as any unspent money or the balance that was left over. I mean, are you planning on doing that before you close these out?
Balance, getting balance, and we're missing, we're missing a column of this one of these. So I can't see the balance or anything.
I can address that. This issue did come up a few months ago. It's a very legitimate one, to be sure that when we're closing out a project, that we detail how much we spent and if there was anything that was left over. I know that that is occasionally a requirement of state transportation projects. We're trying to do a more efficient job now, once we see projects being closed, of at least understanding where the spending was and how it happened. Is there a formal report? Not yet. Maybe we go there soon. But we do keep track of very clearly how much is being spent on each one and knowing when it's all done and the department head tells us, this is what we spent on it. And then you can see in that total project, under total expenses, this is what we spent on that particular project. And, and that's where we're at. And we're not trying to make this convoluted or anything, but every individual project, I can certainly identify that way, to show what was, what was spent on it. And I'm hoping on these closed ones, that we actually have some proceeds that we can redistribute to other capital projects that need it.
I mean, I think it's a good idea to have at least on the completed projects, some kind of information on what happened, whether it is, how much you started, and what was the beginning balance, the end balance, and back to here.
I will pass along to the department heads, they need to get some additional information, because that's going to take several people to assemble, but we can, we can put something, start putting something together.
Thank you. I need for the, I like for the question, these three, I'll see that. We've got a little meeting coming up.
My time's up.
You thought it was, of course, very departmental. Go around it, Mr.
In relation to that question, Mr. Harson, in your experience, is that something that most municipalities do? And I understand we don't.
It's something that all governments should do. And I have a really fun example that I could use from my time in the federal government dealing with grants closeouts in the thousands at a particular agency that had not been done. This is, it's, we're certainly not alone in not doing it, but it is a good practice that we do it.
Well, to the charter, that.
I don't think it would be that difficult, the thing to do.
I don't think from this point forward it would be difficult, no.
Yeah, whoever, whoever is managing the project should be able to give a, sometimes reports on it.
It sounds like something we should certainly look into, maybe a better way to do things.
It is in the, in the charter for them to do this, to make a report on those. And in addition, they should say where the money's going to and what fund it's going to be going into. If it goes into the sausage fund, I mean, this was GO money. It should really go back to GO.
Quite frankly, I think we used to do that back in the day. Luke may remember that. And I think one of the things we should do is, we should always find out, when, when we complete the project, what we're going to do with that money. And if we're going to transfer it, it obviously has to come to City Council.
I don't know probably doing it, just, I think it should be a record, that's all I'm saying, is that there should be a.
Because someone, someone, he did a good job last year, I think he was, when you found out all the projects that were closed, and you came up with a counting of the amount of money that was there available for us to use, that we even don't have.
And that's the point that we're, what we're trying to finish up, and it's taken a year to get there, is dealing with the other things that we're doing. When we close these accounts out, a lot of them are going to show a positive balance. But we have not fully reconciled these projects at the individual level, and we want to make sure that what is showing as a balance in there actually has a cash reserve. Because it may say that there's $1,200,000 left in something, but there, there may have been something in the project accounting that got messed up. So that's why I'm making sure we get all of the, the closeouts done at once, and then we will have an idea of what we really have left over, and then we can have discussion about where it will be sent to.
And that would be good. That's what actually happened before with the $700,000 that you're talking about before. thousand dollars that you're talking about before. So we want to make sure that those have...
I am keenly aware of that one. And that's for that very reason, I don't want to spend something that I know we don't have.
Thank you. All right. So we look for that in the future. Ms. H...
Yes, Ms. Hartzell, twenty sixteen East Highland Street. Mr. Greedy, is this the only time that council talks about this? I do have another meeting, like the financial meeting, that someone teaches the council what's going on on that page, which...
We really, we really don't unless something comes up. This is...
It's kind of evident, David. It's evident that we don't.
This is project finance. We only talk about the project at the beginning of the year, at the beginning of the year sometimes, and two all the year.
Yes, I could see that it's evident. It seems as though there should be more of a collaboration and somebody helping you because is it, is it the controller's job to help council understand who I was sitting there, like, nobody goes to me. Nobody, nobody helps you.
His job is to look at what we pay, that everything, everything that we, we pay is verified, and look at the contracts, and make sure that everything goes well, kind of like between the administration, making sure that things are going the right way. But our deal in the finance report goes to the finance department.
Right. So I'm curious as to how you say, let's do this, or let's do that, when we don't understand...
Well, the reason why I say certain things, because probably obviously experience, and what I've seen before, what we've done, and then what we are lacking, and then what we can do. So it's basically from experience, not necessarily because it's written anywhere. That's the good thing, having somebody who is experienced in council.
It truly means experience.
Not age, it's that spirit.
A lost, it seems like a lost art here. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Any other comments on Mr. H? Do you got about thirty seconds?
Before Mike changes it, I would like to make a suggestion about the time. Like tennis, when something happens, or there's a timeout, or something happens, you take extra minutes when you're talking, Congressman Hartzell's talking, gets added to the scoreboard and returned back to the speaker at the desk. Because I've been watching the time, and the answers take longer than the questions. And so there's a penalty for asking questions that...
But what you say, we never start dealing with it.
Well, now, here's, this is the third time I'm bringing this up. There's a five hundred thousand dollar royalty fee that's paid to the city by the fee payers. And when we go out to LCA and ask them the question about the information on the memorandum of understanding on the executive orders and the two and a half million dollar bond that was in question before, that it doesn't, it's a taxpayers' bill? No, it's a fee payers' bill. But even the solicitor said she was going to check in on that and to find out what the ruling was, where that money should go, when the mayor made the agreement for the water and sewer that council knew nothing about, that the rate payers brought back to council about the five hundred thousand, who made the deal, why it doesn't go to pay off that bond and be eliminated off the rate payers' expense. And yet, this is the third time I'm bringing it up, and there still hasn't been an answer or a movement. Now, if it's a...
You kind of lose me. What is your problem? Tell me, you're talking about...
Why are the rate payers getting screwed of the five hundred thousand dollars on the memorandum of understanding on the water and sewer agreement?
Okay, thank you. Let's look into that. What is, where is the purpose of the five hundred thousand dollars? Go right ahead.
Page two of the monthly report, you will see in line seventy-one twenty, right near the very bottom, that we have received our first semi-annual payment from LCA of the royalty fee. And it's five hundred thousand dollars was the base amount a year ago. And then there is an inflation factor that kicks into it in subsequent years. We received two hundred and fifty-two thousand so far. There will be another payment that comes on later in the year. I, the only thing I'll say about why we're getting it is because the city owns the asset, and as part of the agreement that was made with LCA, that's part of the fee that the city is collecting for the use of the owner, to manage city property for the next however many years this is going to go on. That's where royalty fees would come from.
Okay. So the, one of the questions, Mr. Hartzell, paying for that part, is what do we use that money for?
No. What's the agreement that the rate payers do not get the benefit...
Okay, I got you.
Of the thing versus that it becomes revenue to the city?
Okay.
Because we, we, we don't have a copy or a memorandum of understanding from the deal with the water. Because every time we go out to the county meeting, they say, go back and get the information from the city. We are not going to give you that. Do, do a simple, ask them for the information, how that all came about, and what the intent it was used for, to reduce the bills or to add on to the rate payers' expense. Not that it's not registered. I'm not, I'm not questioning...
I don't, I don't answer. Go right ahead, Mr. Hartzell.
Some of his questions is not something I can answer. Obviously, it's money that is, that goes into the general fund and is used for, comes out of the general fund. It's one of the other managers. His issue is not something I can answer.
That was the answer I was looking for.
But it has to, it has to come from the agreement that was made by the, the people who were on the committee, who made the order deal, that the five hundred thousand would do what?
It goes into the general fund.
But where's the document that says that's what it's for, and that the, the fee payers, the fee payers do not have a right to argue for that money? Where's the document that says that?
No, you certainly have a right to argue for it.
Well, then, would you, as chairman, get the necessary information under the orders or the final agreement that was settled in Harrisburg, that we can understand why the five hundred thousand goes to revenue to the city? Why are the, the fee payers paying five hundred thousand dollars to the city when it should be a deduction on our cost? And the two and a half million dollars, which was mentioned before, would have been paid off in five years if the five hundred thousand dollars would have been applied to, to that debt service, and the taxpayers wouldn't have had a, a raise in the fees. The information of how this came about should not be, should be public knowledge. It should not be withheld. We still don't know. It was a contest even to find out what the memorandum of understanding was, and then the executive orders. And so where's the information that pertained to that? And, and, and why aren't we having it? Counsel, you guys should want it more than me.
We will look into that for you, Mr. H. I'm going to look into that for you, okay?
Well, why don't we look...
We're doing it right now. But we're going to look into it, okay?
Okay. And I want to tell you, I got a rumor tonight, that they might find the one point seven million, and there's going to be a party.
Oh, good, good. Thank you, Mr. H. Mr. Glaser, you were going to say something?
No.
Thank you very much. This is a very...
Thank you, Mr. Greedy. Okay, I'll take over. Mr. Glaser, have a good evening.
Yes, sir.
Pleased to see you. Mr. Hanlon, tonight we're having committee of the whole concerning bill number five. Mr. Hanlon, read the entire bill, bill number five for us.
Bill number five directs the Lehigh County Board of Elections to place a referendum question before the city of Allentown voters on the November seventh, on the May sixteenth primary election ballot, to amend the city of Allentown Home Rule Charter, limit the term of office of the mayor to two terms. There are some amendments that need to be addressed.
Whereas?
Whereas Article, section two of the Pennsylvania Constitution provides that the municipality shall have the right and power to frame and adopt the Home Rule Charter. Whereas the voters of the city of Allentown adopted a Home Rule Charter on April twenty-third, nineteen ninety-six, which became effective January nineteen ninety-seven, is Article three, the mayor, section three oh two, election terms of the Home Rule Charter, states that the term of the mayor shall be four years, commencing the first Monday in January after the election. Whereas the Home Rule Charter does not limit the number of terms the mayor may serve. Whereas section two nine four two of the Home Rule Charter, an optional plans law, authorizes the governing body of a local municipality to initiate a referendum to amend its Home Rule Charter by the enactment of an ordinance. Whereas city council, the city of Allentown, seeks an amendment to the Home Rule Charter to be voted upon by the city of Allentown electorate, do a referendum to establish a term limit for the office of the mayor of two terms, given or deemed by the council of the city of Allentown. The Lehigh County Board of Elections is directed to place the following referendum question to the voters of the city of Allentown on the May sixteen, two thousand seventeen election ballot.
In November.
Okay, so you want me to read the amended version?
Yeah, because May sixteenth is long down.
Okay, so, so the bill would have to amend to add the November seventh, two thousand seventeen election ballot. Article three, the executive branch, section three oh two, election terms, so section three oh two of the city of Allentown Home Rule Charter be amended to add a term limitation for the office of mayor by adding the following section.
Okay, that's, that's good. That's good. The rest would be amendments. Okay, that's good. Again, this, this committee of the whole is for discussion, council members, public. We'll, we'll look at some amendments. Possibly, there could be a recommendation coming this evening from council, being put from the public, but there'll, there'll be no vote tonight. The vote would be next Wednesday, June seventh. Okay. Why don't we, do we have any comments from council at this point, just on the actual bill itself, that we could get into the amendments?
I'd like to make a quick comment.
Mm-hmm.
And it is something that I think, I encourage all my fellow council members to vote on when it's time to vote on it. I think it's something that I've been wanting to do for quite some time, for at least the last three or four years, and finally it's taken into action now. So I'm very, very happy to see it. And the council has entertained it. And initially, I wanted to have a, just two consecutive terms. I thought you had that...
Why don't we get into that when we talk about the amendments?
Okay, okay, we can do that. But I, I, I'm just happy to see that this is going on. And this is obviously taken into account, and we seriously looking at it. And I wanted, obviously, wanted to have it in the May, but we couldn't because of the ten thousand dollars estimated cost. So I'm looking forward that we have this on the ballot in November.
Yeah, and, okay, thank you, Mr. Greedy. And obviously, you sponsored the bill. All seven city council members, Mr. Plante is not present tonight, he's excused. So all seven council members have sponsored the bill. So obviously, it'll come to fruition one way or the other. Also, too, let it be noted that in view of the foregoing, in view of the foregoing, should city council decide to put their question on the November seventh, two thousand seventeen ballot, it is recommended that the thirteenth Tuesday, rather than the county's tenth Tuesday deadline be used to assure the timeline is, the thirteenth Tuesday is no later than August eighth, two thousand seventeen. So it's May thirty-first, we've got June, we've got July, we've got, we probably have about nine to ten weeks. So we, our, our time, our time is, our time is good. Okay. Any comments on the actual bill itself? Now we'll get into the amendments. City council will discuss the, members will discuss the amendments, and we'll open it to public. Mr. Hanlon, read, read option one, which would be amendment one.
Okay, option one was actually part of the bill. So the, the bill as introduced, it said the mayor shall be eligible to succeed himself for only one additional term. It was going to be a suggested slight amendment, and that verbiage would be, the mayor shall be eligible to run for the office after sitting out a complete term of office. And that would be the amendment to that option. The term served to fill in for the remainder of an unexpired term shall not be deemed a term for the purposes of this limitation. And I thought that that language was okay, because the charter provides for filling a vacancy when, when there is one. And you would have to have an election at the next municipal election. As option one, option two, and these would need to be total new amendments, the mayor shall be eligible for two terms only, provided that the terms follow one another. The mayor shall not be eligible for election for more than two successive terms. Again, the time served to fill in for the remainder of the unexpired term shall not be deemed a term for the purposes of this limitation. And option number three was no person shall be elected to the office of mayor more than twice. And again, the term served to fill in for the remainder of an unexpired term shall not be deemed a term for the purposes of this...
And that would be, that, that mimics the Twenty Second Amendment of the United States Constitution. How it involves the President of the United States to be filling, you know, filling out a term for two, and then obviously fill up two more for a total of really ten, am I correct?
That's, that's correct, except that the Twenty Second Amendment provides that if the person filling out the remainder of an unexpired term serves more than two years in council as a term.
The council as a term.
So this, this suggests that somebody could be appointed to fill out the three years or three plus years of a term, and they would still be eligible to run for two separate terms.
But what I thought was that there should be a municipal election in two-year time.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Those are the options. And they, they would be amendments to the bill as they fit. So let's open it to the, let's open it to council members on comments about option one, option two, option three. Mr. Henry, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, too, would also express my desire that this is very timely, and it's due to be passed. I strongly suggest, and I would urge my colleagues to vote for option number three. It should be a two-term, whether it be consecutive or not. I would favor the two-term limit, a total of eight years, unless there will be an unexpired term in the center there. Thank you.
Love them. Any other council members?
Well, I, I, I was looking initially, like, as I said earlier, to have consecutive terms only. But in light of the fact that, we added that second part of putting the, serving the remainder of an unexpired term, I would be fine with it as well. So I'm looking at option three myself as well.
Any other council members? I, 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 and I like, I like option number three, in that obviously it could be two consecutive terms, or it could be a term, you sit out four years, you run again, you win again. It's, it's a total of eight years. Could be consecutive, could be four-year term, sit out four years, and back for four years. I would favor option number three. Any other comments from my colleagues? Mr. Apple, go ahead.
I would also favor this. To make it clear, you serve one term, could be voted out, you come back and serve another term. But that's it. You can't serve two consecutive terms after you've been in, voted out, and back in again. Correct?
Correct. It would be, it would be eight years total. You could do, you could do it in a row, four, four. You could do four, go on vacation for four, and come back for four more, eight years, eight years or...
I like the vacation part.
So, yeah. So you would like, you would support option three?
Yes, I do.
I would also support option, option given, two terms.
Two terms.
Mm-hmm.
Dr. McGuire, one way in, or you? Okay, over there.
I'm down.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, so any other comments? Ms. Wild or Solicitor, do you have any comments, or you just helping, helping us along the way here?
I think our office has already done one.
You did, you did diligence, believe me, that.
Yes, we're right in the kitchen.
Go ahead.
And somebody, they served for, let's say, two years. Actually, let's, let's look at, somehow we have now. Actually, let's, let's, let's look at somebody that we have now, okay?
Put your hand up.
Sorry. If, if somebody serves for a year, they, this is kind of hard. You know, I, I retract that question while asking in private.
Oh, that's fine, I'm good with that. Uh, any other council members? Uh, comments from the public? Mr. Hanlon, go ahead, naming addresses for the record.
Tom Holland, twenty sixteen East Island Street. Before any votes are taken on any of the amendments, the public needs to know what the, uh, retirement benefits are for mayors that run two terms, who run four terms, who run executive terms, and what burden that has on the city taxes for, uh, a, a person who comes in, applies, uh, gets elected to, to, uh, the mayor and, and does the years. We need to know what the financial obligation is for, on the city for the retirement. And if a, a sitting elected official in Allentown is ever indicted and has a, a little, has a little issue.
Mr. Han, Mr. Han.
No, no, I'm just saying, I, I'm just how far I'm looking ahead.
No, you, you're looking, look, I'll, I'll, I'll give you the first part, but you, it's speculation, it's accusation.
It could happen. It's a possibility. I mean, it, it's going on in Washington right now.
Boys, finish your minute and a half, go ahead.
I, 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 I'm not accusing you, I'm just saying that the burden on the city for all the years, someone has to explain what the pension program is, the, the city is obligated to pay for the next fifty years on having a mayor and, and how many terms? That's all, that's really the question I'm asking.
I would assume that that would be part of their pension package, when, that, Mr. Hanlon, they belong to what?
They belong, they belong to our pension, yeah, PMRS.
What is the minimum needed for that?
PMRS.
I think twelve years.
Twelve years, so the likelihood is very slim.
Might be nine or, and you're involuntarily terminated.
For this, but that's, everyone would be grandfathered, obviously.
Yes.
For reelection, okay? So you're already talking.
With, with what we're doing now.
Now.
Right, but a separate thing could be discussed, a separate thing could be discussed that would be now and then the grandfather would be eliminated out of it.
Yeah, but, but we're here in twelve years and this would only be eight years, so.
No, no, I, I.
Is it nine, is it nine, involuntarily terminated?
Terminated.
It could, it could get to you, I think, I'm not sure.
I understand. Mm-hmm.
So, wha- wha- what you're saying is actually, that, that's the way it is, what, what, what's being discussed now? I mean, as far as what the pension obligation is in the future for whoever gets to be mayor? And, and that cost that gets turned over to?
It's not, it's not really part of the bill, it's a kind of a separate entity, a separate issue of retirement system, you know, PMRS.
Well, I, in other words, uh, it, it would be interesting if we would, we could find out what that was and what the cost would be to the budget. Because in the next fifty years, uh, let's say every, uh, uh, forty years, we're going to have another, add another pension here to, 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 to the taxes. I, that's, I'm just looking down the road to see what it was and then as things change, oh, we have to change this pension or we have to change that or we have to change this. I, that's what I'm, I'm just trying to find out what it's going to be like as, as this thing moves forward.
Got you.
Yeah, that's a good question.
That's a fair question, but a lot of that is going to be out of our hands, you know, with the retirement system, pension system, just like a school employee or just like a county worker or state worker.
Hey, Mr. Ersh, go ahead.
Four questions. You know, in nineteen ninety-six, the Allentown voters adopted Home Rule Charter Plan A. You know, there are different Home Rule charters that you can adopt. The voters in nineteen ninety-six adopted Plan A. Could that be part of the question or are we amending Home Rule Charter Plan A? Yes, we adopted, there are different Home Rule charters that you put in voters. Before that, we had a different charter. Nineteen ninety-six, we adopted Charter Plan A. Could that be part of the question or did you put up directing the voters, meant Home Rule Charter Plan A?
I think this would just be one part of the charter that would be amended, not doing Plan A a whole.
Well, we adopted the charter, I mean, we have to maybe say we're adopting the Plan A charter for the mid, two terms. Well, I don't know, oh, well, I don't have Plan A in front of me.
Well, we could, we could, between now and next week, we could get the actual.
Yeah, we could do Plan A.
How we want to do it.
Because there are different Home Rule charters, in that's being, we adopted Plan A.
Right, and we're saying we're amending Home Rule Charter Plan A for the term limits. That's, we'll check into that, that's a, that's more than, that's, that's a good question. Yes, sir, I welcome, naming addresses for the record.
I'm Hollis Perry, twenty-two Shorty IV, South Lomond Street, Allentown, PA.
Uh-huh.
Um, any council members, some, some of y'all know me. Um, the reason why I'm asking a question is, why are we putting in term limits right now? Like, what's the reason why, why now? Why?
Because we want to change the charter, to amend it, to have term limits on the mayor. In the future, if, if the mayor would be grandfathered, okay? It would only take effect after it's passed by council and the mayor can veto it or not veto it and goes forward. That's, that's why we're doing it now.
What's the purpose of it?
To limit the term of the mayor for two terms.
But is it going to save the city money or is it going to cost the city money?
It possibly saves the city money.
We haven't looked into it to make sure.
No, we ju, we just heard that, well, we just heard that if you're, you know, you're, you're twelve years for people, for the retirement system, you're going to get a retirement, you do eight years, you're not eligible for, for the pension system.
So it's going to save the city money?
I don't know, possibly.
Uh, I'd like to have the council look into that before we, you know, before we put it to a vote. But basically, we should just put it to a vote and this little one on the ballot and it's going to be up speakers.
Yeah, what happens is, uh, council, uh, we don't vote tonight, we're just discussing it tonight with council and the public. And then, uh, we might choose an option for a recommendation. Then it will come back as, to the entire council next week, then it will be, uh, for a vote. And then the mayor has up to ten days, I believe, Ms. Wild, like Romney days to veto. Then the mayor could veto it, okay? Then it comes back to us and we can override his veto. And then if we, if we, the scenario would be, if he doesn't veto it, puts on the ballot, he does veto it, we override his veto, goes to the voters on November seventh of this year and they say, yes, they like the idea or no, they don't like the idea.
Be up to the people. Are you going to make that, uh, the information available about the cost to the city? Because I want to know, you know, what the cost is going to be to the city in regards to this transaction because, I mean, if it's, if it's going to cost.
I don't know, but I don't.
I don't know.
The, the cost that was referred to earlier was if it was put on the primary ballot because there would have had to be separate ballots prided for independent voters who wouldn't want.
It may determine, I'm talking, not the paperwork.
Are you talking about the cost of a mayor retiring?
Yes, that's what I mean.
Yeah, that's what I'm, that, that projection, I, I, I don't know, that's up to how many years they have in the system?
How much they're earning.
How much they're earning, a certain percentage of that, uh, you know? Like, if you're in the school system, you retire after thirty-five years, you get two point five, so you get, you know, uh, basically eighty-seven point five percent of your highest three years. That's all up the pension system, that's not up the council.
Okay.
That's determined by then.
Does council have term limits?
No. Go ahead.
The council doesn't have term limits, but you know, councils, how can council doesn't want to have term limits but you want the mayor to have term limits?
That's, 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 that's not, that's, that's a, the bill, the bill five is in front of us for term limits for the mayor. The mayor can introduce a bill for term, am I, am I correct? The mayor can introduce a bill, the administration can introduce a bill for term limits for council and the controller? Absolutely, it's up to him, two different entities, executive branch, legislative branch.
Okay, you answered my question.
You're welcome, Mr. Perry, good seeing you.
I want to speak. I have to, may I?
Oh, Dr. McGuire, go ahead.
I do, Dr. McGuire.
Uh, your question, this is for the, you raised a number of questions. First, council doesn't get salaries except six thousand a year. Uh, we do not, I, speaking for myself, do not get health benefits, do not get anything in the pension, right? Number two, the format of this is no different than, say, the federal constitution where president gets two terms and out. A congressman can get twenty-two terms. And they get pensions and they get other things. So, uh, council as an office does not receive benefits in a normal sense. Uh, number three, the charter change was made in nineteen ninety-six, if I'm correct?
Mm-hmm.
And we've gone through a number of mayors since then and councils since then. It is the general feeling among, uh, this council, the majority of us, probably all of us, that in retrospect, looking at the office, seeing how, uh, the city management takes place, that all things considered, we are like a corporation. We do not want to have the same executive person for having a certain age or a certain number of years, et cetera. And this, the impact of this doesn't affect anybody currently in office. Whoever is currently in office would have the opportunity in the office of mayor to serve another two terms. In which case, if they die of old age or have other problems, et cetera. So this is not, uh, notwithstanding other things that are going on that we are aware of, this is not a targeted because of a person, it's the experience of the office. It's, in the constitution, it never made arrangements for, uh, disabled residents and so on. And these keep getting changed. I think of it as a council member, as that sort of, uh, I, that's my, thank you.
I thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Perry.
Thank you, nice seeing you. Nice seeing you.
Anyone else from the public?
I think so.
That one's coming up?
Yeah. Second, I want to ask. Helen, Helen Holland, twenty sixteen East Island Street. When did, when did it change? They were, they were having two terms, is that correct? Did you say in ninety-six, it went to two terms? But when did it go to more than two terms? I don't know.
So your question was?
Yeah. Were, were they, what's?
There was, there was, there was no term limit.
Under the charter.
No term limit.
Opened it.
Under the charter in ninety-six, unlimited term.
Unlimited, then it, did it go to two terms at one time? No, it never got changed.
No, no, that's what we're, uh, that's what this, this bill addresses it.
I was mixed up, I thought there was a time when you, the council, um, you set two terms, but then it changed to any.
No.
Okay, so it was like this.
Yeah.
Thank you, thanks.
Anyone else from the public? Seeing none, uh, Mr. Hanlon, um, I asked Ms. Wild or Solicitor, being that we have the bill and I know Mr. McLean is not here, would, would it be prudent to add amendment three, option three with the bill? Or should we wait till next week to do that?
Well, a couple of you have commented on option three, but not everybody has, so.
All the people here have, okay? Uh, except Dr. McGuire did not make a comment on option three and Mr. McLean is absent, so.
I, I did that, Mr. President, just because I didn't have anything to add, despite that I object or do object. Because that's a requirement of the cast of court.
Okay, well, I don't, just for special, so, go ahead.
If it's, if it's the consensus or the majority that, that option three is what you're going to build with, I think you should add it tonight for voting next week.
Okay, and Mr. Hanlon, would you, um, read option three again? So we're going to take, we'll take bill five and then we'll go to option three, which would be an amendment to the bill five, go ahead and read that.
Okay, could I, could I include those other minor amendments in this whole thing?
Yeah, go ahead, yeah.
Okay, so the other minor amendments would be, the bill was introduced on the eighteenth, not January fourth. It was a typo. And as, uh, the council president stated, it would be, uh, directed to the November seventh ballot, not the May sixteenth ballot. Um, and then outside adding that option there, uh, this was a suggestion from the solicitor's office, there would be a section four added to the ordinance that would read, pursuant to the Home Rule Charter, adopted by the voters of Allentown, these provisions shall be considered adopted and effective upon certification by the election board. And then option three would replace, uh, the language that's in there. And then option three would be, no person shall be elected to the office of mayor more than twice. The term served to fill in for the remainder of an unexpired term shall not be deemed a term for the purposes of this limitation.
Okay, and, uh, Ms. Wild, we can do that by common consent or that's what constitute a vote? We just let it ride until next week?
I think we can do it by common consent, but that we have no exactly what you're voting on next week.
Sounds good. Uh, colleagues, by common consent?
Yes.
I agree.
Yes.
Okay, so we got all, we got six days, common consent. Uh, any other business? Uh, seeing none, this meeting is adjourned, have a good evening. Thank you, Ms. Wild.
Have a good night.